Afternoon, everyone. Welcome. It's my pleasure to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of August 19th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Kamay. Campos.
Present.
Tortillas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Casey.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Tony. Now, if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Dwan, do we need to, uh, do you need a little more time for the invocation?
Yes.
Okay. We will, hopefully, we're able to do the scheduled invocation. We will take up ceremonial items first. So Councilmember Mulcahy, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize Voyager Craft Coffee.
Good afternoon. So I prefer a cappuccino in the morning. No laugh. Unfortunately, most places don't know how to make them. Too much milk, weak espresso, no balance. Starting back years ago, my car would just drive to a great hip local provider named Voyager Craft Coffee on Stevens Creek Boulevard. Now, years later, as the District Six Councilmember, who knew I'd get to host the grand opening this past April of their beautiful Park Avenue location, which includes a bean roastery, world-class bakery, and a dynamic café space? And then a few weeks ago, Mayor Mahan, Councilmember Kamay, and I were able to help them celebrate their relocated café in their downtown hotspot at Market and St. John. So today, it's my honor to recognize Voyager Craft Coffee, a local success story and a shining example of what makes our District Six community and our city in general so vibrant. It's the commitment, passion, and drive of our local small business founders. And these founders are San Jose natives Sam Shaw and Lauren Burns. The dynamic duo built their cafés to foster welcoming spaces that embody the spirit of their hometown, San Jose. What began as a modest coffee trailer has blossomed into a thriving business with multiple locations, kiosks, and licensed vendors. However, way more than incredible coffee, baked goods, and cool artistic spaces, Sam and Lauren's brightest stars are their staff members who show kindness and care for their customers. Voyager Craft Coffee exemplifies San Jose's entrepreneurial spirit, exceptional craftsmanship, and steadfast commitment to community. We're proud to commend Voyager Craft Coffee for their outstanding contributions to San Jose and their ongoing dedication to excellence. Now, I think Lauren's gonna say a couple of words here. She's gonna step forward, then the mayor will come forward and, uh, help me with the commendation, take a few photos. So Lauren, take it away.
Thank you so much for those kind words, Councilmember Mulcahy. And I just want to say thank you to the San Jose City Council, to the mayor. We're very honored to be here. I'm a little nervous, to be honest. But we, you know, we are just so grateful for being in this city because the city has really lifted us up to get through a lot of hard times. COVID, we got through our store closing and another one opening. So our community is really what we want to say thank you to. I wish they could all be here to say thank you, and also the city of San Jose in general. You guys have helped us with countless build-outs, with lots of different issues that we have come up with, so we really do appreciate everything that you've done for us to help us get to where we are. And obviously, I want to say, I want to thank Sam, our, my co-founder. We've built this together, and it's been quite the journey, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, guys, on behalf of the whole council. Thanks for everything you've done in the community. We appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're big fans of you guys.
Thank you.
Can you bring my cappuccino?
I forgot it.
We got everybody, Councilmember Tocqueville.
Yes, again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize the venerable Sa Dul Sun, and we'll invite our venerable monks to come down as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. It is my honor to stand before you all today as we recognize and pay tribute to a person whose leadership, compassion, and dedication has uplifted our community in so many ways. Venerable Sa Dul Sun. Venerable Sa Dul Sun is a teacher, a counselor, a cultural guardian, and above all, a steadfast and caring presence for so many of us here in San Jose. He teaches us not only the Dharma, but also the Kamar history and culture through his gentle guidance and wisdom. Many individuals and families have found comfort, healing, and deeper connections to their roots. But his contributions go far beyond his temple walls. In March 2023, venerable Sa Dul Sun played a key role in advocating for the official approval of San Jose's first traditional Kamar Kambuchakram Temple. Later that same year, he helped lead the organization of San Jose's very first Cambodian flag-raising ceremony, a proud and emotional moment as we saw Cambodian heritage honored publicly by the city they call home. Venerable Sa Dul Sun was also instrumental in holding the first Cambodian genocide remembrance ceremony at San Jose City Hall, giving voice to a painful history while also honoring the resilience of the survivors in the Kamar community as a whole. So today, we say thank you for your leadership, your service, and your love for the people. You have helped write a new chapter in Kamar history here in your homeland, in your new homeland of San Jose. Venerable Sa Dul Sun, we are grateful for you, and we are proud to stand with you. Thank you. Now, I will now pass it over to you to say a few comments. Thank you.
Before I begin, before I begin, I would like to invite X. D. Han Zhao to join me onstage during truly honorable moment. Your presence will add significance and unity to this special occasion. Would like to invite you to come here. I sincerely thanks to the council member Peter Ortiz and Mayor Mahan and the entire council for the opportunity to speak today. I also want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the extraordinary community leader X. D. Han Zhao Yuan for her unwavering support of our communities in San Jose, which has often gone unnoticed for long term. As a Kameh Kambuchakram monk for 25 years, I have committed my life to serving our communities. Since 2018, I have been a Dharma preacher and Kameh language instructor at Wat Kameh Kambuchakram, where I dedicate myself to promoting peace, understanding, and cultural heritage. My daily responsibility includes organizing and leading ceremony that honor the Buddha's teachings, preaching teachings, and offering blessings to those in need. I'm honored to provide comfort to individuals facing illness, family loss, or emotional distress, whether during community events, home visits, or hospital visits. My work aims to heal and bring hope to our community member, fostering a sense of unity and compassion. I also participate activities in communities gathering voice concern and exercise my rights to pre-speak alongside fellow monks and communities member committed to our shared growth. Today, I'm humbled and honored to accept this commendation, and I thank Councilmember Peter Ortiz once again for our ongoing support. I also wholeheartedly thanks to X. Yuan, older respected Buddhist monk from Burma, Laos, and Kameh Kambuchakram and Cambodia, and our community member here today for standing with me on this memorable occasion. Together, let us continue to strengthen our community through understanding, compassion, and shared values. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Thank you.
Now, I invite the mayor to please present the commendation. Thank you.
For your contributions to the community.
Thank you so much, sir, and highly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Why don't we put you in the middle? Thank you for everything you do. We'll put you in the middle for a big photo.
Thank you so much, sir, and highly appreciate it.
Oh, yes, there we go.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, sir. If you have one, be sure to get it.
Everybody squeeze in.
Can you fit us in there?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to see you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your team.
Thank you. All right. And for our third and final ceremonial item, I would like to invite Ray Reardon, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management, to the podium as we recognize and proclaim Emergency Management Awareness Month in the city of San Jose. And I believe Ray will be joined by some staff as well. Come on down, Ray. And I'll get started with some opening remarks on Emergency Management Awareness Month. Emergencies don't just schedule themselves on our calendars. They arrive suddenly, and when they do, they put lives, homes, and our environment at serious risk. Oh, and our city manager Jennifer McGuire's coming down. Awesome. Here in San Jose, we are fortunate to have a dedicated office of emergency management that works across every department to prepare for, respond to, and recover from these challenges. Guided by best practices from Cal OES and FEMA, they keep us ready when it matters most. Since COVID first struck, our emergency management organization has been activated more than 16 times. In every instance, their planning, training, and coordination helped reduce the impact and speed up recovery. That kind of readiness doesn't happen by chance. It comes from steady preparation and teamwork by OEM staff and our Emergency Management Work Group. These professionals often work behind the scenes, but their impact is deeply felt and appreciated. They remind us that resilience is not built in a moment of crisis. It's built through preparation, partnership, and practice. That's why today, I'm proud to proclaim August as Emergency Management Awareness Month. It's a chance to recognize the professionals who keep us safe, but it's also a call to action to confront the risks we know are real. This year, through our budget, we've made wildfire preparedness a top priority. We're reducing fuel loads in our wildland urban interface, partnering with experts, and using new technology to identify the highest-risk areas, expanding zone-based evacuation software to get people out quickly and safely, and strengthening our fire department with new stations and staffing. But preparedness isn't just the city's responsibility. It's something we all share. Clear brush around your home, make a family evacuation plan, prepare a go-bag, and consider becoming a cert certified, becoming cert certified to support your neighbors in times of crisis. This Saturday, the Basking Ridge Neighborhood Association is hosting a wildfire and emergency preparedness fair, a great chance to get connected with resources and take direct action. Together, by planning ahead, we can keep San Jose safe, resilient, and ready for whatever comes our way. Now, I'd like to invite Ray Reardon, our Director of Emergency Management, to share more about how his team is advancing this important work. Ray? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I don't think I need to say anymore after that, but, um, very, very much when the next significant earthquake comes, hits the Bay Area, or the next atmospheric river drenches San Jose, police and fire will not be able to have sufficient resources to do at all. That's where emergency management steps in. The goal of the emergency manager is to work to build a support team for our first responders. We become a first responder to fill the void between what resources are normally available and those that are required to meet the needs of the whole community. Emergency managers are responsible to build a team among all departments to plan, train, and exercise as a team, and to prepare and execute when our worst experience is upon us. The team we've built includes representatives of all 24 departments and the offices within the city. During COVID, this team rose to the occasion to provide the best service to the public. It wasn't easy, but the team prevailed to make us the most vaccinated city in the United States at 93%. A feat only outdone by the pride and respect the team felt collectively when the force of the city was challenged. Emergency management truly is a team sport. I extend my appreciation to our small but mighty Office of Emergency Management, the representatives from all the departments who built our Emergency Management Work Group, and the support from the city manager, the mayor, city council, and thanks also to the residents for passing Measure T in 2018, which built our brand-new EOC that was dedicated two years ago. On the walls in the Emergency Operations Center, we have three pledges: to maintain open, honest communication, to practice compassion in action, and act as one team. The city workforce is ready to, uh, for our next disaster because of their effort to expand emergency management responsibilities to all departments. Thank you all.
Thanks, Ray. It's for you and your team, and just want to thank you all for the work you're doing to get us prepared. We appreciate it. Put you in the middle. City Manager.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Oh, here you go. Right here.
Right here. Saved the day.
I know.
We're ready. We're ready. I think we're ready.
Oh, not yet. Okay. Today's invocation is getting started. Tell them, tell them, yeah. Tell them, yeah. Do it on the mic.
Let's, uh, let's hold off for about a minute for the introduction.
They know how to make entrance.
True. Thank you. Thank you very much. If you were dozing off earlier, you are awake now. That was awesome. Today's invocation was provided by Aztec dance group Esplendor Azteca Cipe Totec, and this is the Council District Seven's month to organize our invocation, so I will hand things over to Councilmember Dwan to tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor, first of all, for allowing, switch around the agenda a little bit to allow this, uh, this beautiful dancer to come here. Well, that was the Explendor Azteca Cipe Totec. That lead the invocation today. They founded by dance captain Gorado in Salinas, 1970, and they have spent more than 50 years preserving and sharing the tradition of Aztec dancing across the United States, Canada, and Europe. With the support of the, of Captain Lucia, Lucia Caballeros, the group remained over 40 active dancers and participated in cultural events throughout California. Once a month, on the first Sunday of the month, Esplendor Azteca Cipe Totec perform at La Placita Tropicana in District Seven. Their performances are prayer in motion, honoring the Creator, the four elements, and the memory of ancestor while fostering faith, spiritual, and respect for all living beings. So thank you so much for being here, and please join me, give them another applause for the Esplendor Azteca Cipe Totec.
Thank you, Councilmember. We're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Not seeing any. We do have an adjournment today. Today's city council meeting is adjourned in memory of Frank M. Taylor, who passed away in March of 2025. We extend our deepest condolences to his wife Barbara, daughters Emily and Sarah, and to his grandchildren, who are watching the city council meeting today from Oregon. We have a number of other friends and co, former colleagues with us in the audience today, including former council members, our former mayor, Tom McHenry, and many others who have contributed a lot to our city and are here to honor Frank's life and show support to his family. Frank served as the Executive Director of the San Jose Redevelopment Agency for two decades through 1999. He was a man of consummate passion about his work, which was the art and science of city building. His ambitious vision to reimagine downtown San Jose and its surrounding neighborhood business districts and industrial areas led to a spectacular array of public projects that bear his imprint to this day. Strategically, that vision anchored the downtown to the south with the McHenry Convention Center and Bibliot Center and Biblioteca Latinoamericana, to the west with the SAP Arena, to the north with the Japantown Historic District, and most dramatically to the east with City Hall and the Mexican Heritage Plaza and Gardens. Within the downtown, Frank facilitated the design and construction of the Tech Museum, the Children's Discovery Museum, the Museum of Art Expansion, the Hammer Repertory Theater, and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library, as well as new housing, hotels, and office buildings that were supported by public investments in streetscapes, parks, and passeos. Always with an eye towards beauty and practicality, Frank never lost sight of his dream to create an urban center worthy of the capital of Silicon Valley, a dream we share to this day. He created the neighborhood business districts, many of which were chosen because they were the gateways into downtown, including the Alameda, West San Carlos, East Santa Clara and Alam Rock, and others such as Japantown, Willow Street, 13th Street, Story Road, and Lincoln Avenue. Public investments in the North San Jose, Edenville, Monterey Corridor, Olender, and Julian Stockton industrial areas actualized his vision to create jobs and promote an innovation-driven economy. In everything he did, Frank insisted on a commitment to excellence. He was a big-picture guy who was always in love with his city. This is the legacy we honor today and for years to come. And in acknowledgement of his great service to San Jose, we welcome many of Frank's redevelopment agency staff gathered here in the council chambers today and online from coast to coast to honor and pay homage to the man who inspired the indomitable spirit of public service in each of them, to love our city passionately and serve our community faithfully. I now invite Mayor Tom McHenry to say a few words about Frank and his extraordinary contributions to San Jose.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have misread the glass box that's sitting in front of me. It said, "Please deposit if you want to speak." I thought I made it clear, Matt. I didn't want to pay to have to come here today, but I'm very happy to be here and see so many of Frank's friends and so many others that value the things that he did here in San Jose. Rue, you did a very good job, and David and Dean, in making sure we had the kind of turnout there is today. Frank Taylor is being honored at what I always felt was the supreme and best time at any council meeting, the adjournment. So, I think, and I hope that will hold true today. Frank was an immigrant, like many people are, to San Jose, and they come with what immigrants always have, with a special zest and an energy to make the place better, and with an awful lot of hope, too. Frank and his wife Barbara and his daughters Emily and Sarah really had the best thing that I admire, the virtue I admire in people. They loved San Jose. They loved this city, and they did everything possible to try and improve it. They came from Boston through Cincinnati, but San Jose was and is and always will be their home. Mayor Matt pointed out very well what Frank was able to do. He gave people what my predecessor Janet Gray Hayes once asked, "Let's make San Jose better before we make it bigger." It used to be our goal to be as big as Los Angeles. Well, that was shed very quickly, and thankfully still is today. We don't want to be big so somebody can say we're great. We want to be a good city, and we were able, with redevelopment in Edenville and in North San Jose, to give us a tax base we never had. Cops, librarians, parks workers, all the things that people have desired in San Jose but never quite got. Frank was an interesting character, to say the least. You know, he worked through that, but he always remembered the little districts, too, the Willow Glens and the Almedens and the East Santa Clara Streets, the places that really meant a lot because the neighbors surrounded those. And we wanted them to be interested in downtown, and the litany that you said, Mayor Matt, of all the things that were provided here. When all those things went in place, I think people got a good deal more. They got a sense of pride and confidence in the city. Maybe they always had it, but maybe they were able to shout it a little bit more from the rafters. I know a lot of us did, and not just at Shark Games. We were happy that we didn't have to drive other places, nice places like San Francisco and Oakland, but it's a lot better to do those types of things in San Jose. You know, our people here always looked ahead. Frank was a person who saw things very simply, but he saw them very clearly. He was able to deal with the famous architects like Aldo Jergula and the great Riccardo Ligoretta of the Tech Museum. He was able to deal with them with the same type of precision he used with the workmen that were doing the manhole covers on the streets. And take a look at those manhole covers sometime. I don't think they exist in Rome, or in London, or in Paris. That's Frank Taylor. He was a special person, and everybody here knows one thing. You know, you want to make your time that you spend, the efforts that you put in with the sacrifices, and the time you don't get to spend with your family or in other endeavors. You want your time in government to mean something. You know, you want to be able to say, you know, "I left this place better than I found it." Frank was certainly able to say that, and he was one of many people, and many of them are here today, and a lot of them are gone and forgotten, as all of us will be. But it's important to be able to have that, to understand that you have done something that maybe wouldn't have happened without you and the associates and the efforts. You know, it's been a long struggle, and people in this audience and those in the dais know it very well, that you want to make a difference. Frank Taylor made a difference. All the years, we strived to make San Jose kind of a special place. Janet Gray Hayes and Susan Hammer and Bonk Oliverato, Judy Stabile, so many, many others, again, that are just names, just memories, just like mine, and most of yours will eventually be, but it's important to know that you've accomplished those things. The work is never finished. The work continues, and I know with Mayor Matt and this council, you understand that clearly, and will continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Those were beautifully spoken words. I think we've all taken to heart. We appreciate your leadership in our city, and once again, we want to just honor Frank Taylor's memory, the sacrifices he and his family made for our city, and thank all of his colleagues, who I know learned from him, were inspired by him, and worked alongside him to build a better city, as Mayor McHenry just said. So, thank you all for being here and honoring Frank and his legacy in the way that you have today. We Yep. And colleagues, we are still on Orders of the Day. We've not moved on yet to our next item, and we actually do have a new item that I would like to add to the agenda, but it would require a two-thirds vote. Let me just describe what this is. This would be a new item, listed on the agenda as item 2.17. This is the amicus brief in the Culture of Life Family Services v. Bonta Reproductive Rights and Local Enforcement Authority. Would like to add this under Orders of the Day for council approval. That, again, requires a two-thirds vote to be added to the agenda, and then it could be taken up. Make sense to everyone. Any questions? Okay, I'll go to Councilmember Cohen.
I'll move approval of the agenda with the additional...
2.17?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, great. And then we will vote on that unless there are any other items on Orders of the Day. Tony, do we have any public comment on Orders of the Day?
I do not.
Okay, that's open forum, I believe. Yeah. Okay, great. Tony, then coming back to the council, let's vote on Orders of the Day.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Nora, thank you for the reminder. Okay, we are going to move on then to closed session report. Nora, do we have anything out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent calendar. I understand Vice Mayor, you would like to pull item 2.16, is that correct?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and just before you comment, let me ask if there are any other items colleagues wish to pull from consent. I am not aware of any. Let me just check my screen here. I think we're good. Oh, Councilwoman Tordeos, did you have an item?
I just had a quick question for staff on item 2.13.
Great, let's pull that as well. Okay.
Thank you.
So, we'll go, Vice Mayor, go ahead and comment on 2.16, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Tordeos.
Thank you. Actually, this is, 2.16 is Boards and Commission Appointment, and this specifically is an appointment for District Four, which I will support, but the reason I pulled this is that many of our council members may have vacancies in various commissions, particularly the Senior Commission, of which I am the council liaison, and many of our commissions are struggling to meet quorum because we don't have enough people who have signed up. So, I'm going to call out specifically the Senior Commission, but there are very many others that probably need appointments, so I would encourage the council members to check and see where they have vacancies and please appoint. But specifically in the Senior Commission, and I'm raising it because today they have a retreat. It was supposed to be last week. It was canceled because of a quorum couldn't be established. So, the vacancies are in D1, D2, D3, D5, and the citywide appointment. So, so, so there you go. Those of you who I just shouted out, if you need help or want to talk about it, please let me know, but I'd love to see a full commission, so in case the Senior Commission, someone has to not attend a meeting, they can still perform their duty. With that, do you want me to move approval of the whole? Okay, then I will move approval of the consent, including 2.16.
I would like to note that the recruitment period is open right now. It ends September 30th. We sent out an email out to council last week, so please put that in your newsletters so we get a really good pool of people from your districts.
Great. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor and Tony. I really appreciate that PSA and the public accountability. That's good. That's good to model. Somebody in my office is in trouble. Just kidding. It's probably me. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion, but I know Councilwoman Tordeos had a question on item 2.13.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick question on recommendation F, the increase to the director's authority for awards. Understand that there's some implication there for our Public Works PLAs. Also, just wanted to clarify that there's no immediate impact to the threshold. Is that correct?
That's good. So, Matt Lesh, Director of Public Works, thanks for the question. Yes, there's no immediate action here on terms of implications of the PLA, because obviously this is the first reading of it. There'll be a second reading, and it is effective 30 days after the second reading. We'll have an item coming in the middle of September that we're already working on with the Building Trades Council for re-ad amendment of our PLA to have an acceptable limit.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that question and answer. I don't see any other hands. Tony, did we have public comment on the consent calendar?
No.
Okay, coming back to the council, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Next is land use consent. We have item, and I'm sorry, do we have City Manager's report? I apologize. I don't seem to have that here. Okay, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We had land use consent first, then I'll come to Jennifer. I apologize. On land use consent, we have item 10.1A. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great. I don't see any other hands. Tony, do we have public comment on item 10.1A?
Not for this item.
Okay, coming back to the council, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now, we are on to the report of the city manager. I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Today, I am very pleased to introduce you to Jen Baker, our new Director of the City Manager's Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. Jen started the position yesterday. Jen, would you please stand? Make you stand for a minute here. Jen will oversee the Office of Economic and Development Team of 61 full-time equivalent talented employees with an annual operating budget of approximately $67 million. Jen will lead efforts to catalyze job creation, private investment, revenue generation, talent development and attraction, and a diverse range of arts, cultural, and entertainment offerings, create opportunities to attract and retain top development, and support and empower small businesses and business districts to flourish and thrive in San Jose. She will be instrumental in executing the recently City Council-approved economic strategy work plan that includes five objectives: retaining and growing jobs and revenue, and promoting innovation from large and medium-sized businesses in key sectors, sectors such as manufacturing and artificial intelligence; fostering small business resilience and creating thriving business districts; accelerating a thriving downtown; activating San Jose as the South Bay's hub for sports, arts, and entertainment; and preparing residents to participate in the local economy through training, education, and career support. As the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs is also an integral member of our interdepartmental team, leading the growing our economy and building more housing in city council focus areas, Jen will be a key leader in driving those two priorities as well. A little bit more about Jen. She began her career in 2004 as an international trade policy expert with the U.S. Department of Commerce. There, she developed her acumen in negotiating buy and multilateral trade agreements and served as a negotiation and compliance lead. She facilitated the delivery of millions of dollars in trade capacity building programming to priority U.S. trading partners. In 2005, she served as a Trade Capacity Building Director for the Office of the U.S. Trade Representative. From 2008 to 2011, Jen worked as a consultant, which took her to Ethiopia, where she produced best-practice materials for analyzing the country's existing trade law framework, and then to Port Vea, Vana Natu, where she prepared island-country stakeholders with trade, impact, and policy considerations in the lead-up to bilateral trade negotiations with Australia and New Zealand. From 2011 to 2018, she was promoted from Economic Development Manager to Deputy Director, then Acting Director, for the U.S. Small Business Administration in Portland, Oregon, raising brand visibility, ensuring delivery of quality programming that bolstered small businesses' access to capital and capacity building, and led a multi-departmental team that grew the lending portfolio, oh, 275% from $220 million to $609 million. Most recently, Jen served as the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Columbia River Economic Development Council in Vancouver, Washington, in the state's fastest-growing country, county, sorry. She developed and mentored a team to grow a sophisticated workflow for site selection, outbound prospecting, strategic incentives, partnership development, and prioritization of local infrastructure investments. This team's successful business attraction pipeline and technology-informed outbound recruitment workflow added $1.69 billion to the county and almost 4,000 jobs from 2021 to 2024. Additionally, Jen represented Pacific Northwest economic policy interests as part of the silicon forest semiconductor and microelectronics ecosystem with several industry drivers, and also served as an appointed advisor to Governor Ferguson's Semiconductors Work Group. Jen holds a Bachelor of Arts in International and Modern Studies from Pacific University in Oregon, and a Master of Arts in International Policy Studies in International Trade and Development from Millbury Institute of International Studies in Monterey, California. Given Jen's strong foundation and extensive experience in economic development, policy, and strategy, I am certain her insight and leadership will significantly contribute to San Jose's continued success, prosperity, and culture. I would also like to acknowledge Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox for his leadership... I would also like to acknowledge Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox for his leadership as he temporarily stepped in to lead the department during this recruitment. So, thank you very much, Lee. One last thank and a very important one goes to all of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs employees for their hard work and commitment to our residents, businesses, arts, community and visitors. Please stand up if you are in the audience. I'd like to see some of our Office of Economic Development employees. Yay. Thank you. And with that, I would like to invite Jen up to share some remarks with you and introduce herself. Thank you, Jen.
Well, good afternoon. My sincere gratitude, City Manager McGuire, for this opportunity to serve and lead in your Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. Mayor, City Council Members, it is a delight and an absolute pleasure to be here. I know that there was considerable discipline exercised in putting together the Economic Strategy Work Plan and I'm quickly getting briefed up by OEDCA team members on how that plan is being implemented and ways that we can articulate it most effectively for the city. In just 60 seconds, which was the time I was told I'm allotted, what I can share about economic development is that the communities that are getting it right are the ones that are proactively working together across districts and industry lines and that one-team energy is certainly what's exuded by our OEDCA staff and leadership. So, I look forward to contributing to that. Recent announcements from the city and PG&E on 2,000 megawatts of new industry-serving transmission capacity, the culminating work with the San Jose Sharks, and a roster of global sports and entertainment industry opportunities and activations in 2026 are really going to help us make a mark and I have a make-a-mark poster right outside the 16th floor elevator. Those are each opportunities that we will seize and with the same commitment and collaboration and welcome that I received from city, city manager and the OEDCA team yesterday. By all measures, it's a great time to engage in economic development and connecting with business and community members to drive revenue growth in the city of San Jose and I'm proud and humbled to be the new OEDCA Director. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome again.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Jen. Welcome to our team here at the city. We're so excited to work with you to drive economic development and opportunity for our community. Lee, I assume Jennifer gave you double pay over the last few months. Some extra thanks. Thank you for stepping in.
Solid pat on the back.
Pat on the back. Hey, not bad. Could be worse. Thank you though, Lee, for stepping in and doing double duty there. All right, so we are on to item 4.1. This is the Card Room Regulation Fee. So, I understand that there is no staff presentation. Everybody has the materials in the agenda. I will start with Tony. Do we have public comment on this item?
I have no cards.
Okay, thank you. Coming back to the council. Turn to colleagues, go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Just briefly, I'm glad to see this come forward to create some efficiencies and reduce some duplications in our card room regulations. So, with that, I will move the staff, or move the staff recommendation and our memo, which supports a staff recommendation.
Great, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands, so Tony, why don't we vote on that?
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. So, that brings us to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have public comment?
Yes. When I call your name, please come on down. Translations are available on Screen Two for the council members and on the screen above or on your handheld device by scanning the QR code available in the chambers. I have Ally come on down, Esazes, an anonymous one, and Jessica. Can you please come on down? Go ahead.
And you have two minutes.
I forgot. I'm sorry. I'm a disabled veteran and I do have a PTSD and major depression if I take your time, with all respect. I didn't get these sicknesses by myself. This has happened after the San Jose police brutality and torture. And since then, I've been telling all of you, riding all of you, and I never received any help or support. It's been 12 years. I complained everywhere, DA, five times, even though they dismissed my case after three and a half years. They go through me, all those criminal issue. In the beginning, like, you know, two racist, huge bully guy. I'm 5'7", they were 6'3", 6'4", forced to fight with me. They forced me to fight at Three Flame Restaurant. And I defend myself and I try to stay alive against two individuals. And I created issue there to make the police come to save us. Even though police came later on and I obey everything, but police shot me, pepper sprayed me. I was down and they were poking my eye with the bottled water, woke me up. And I say, "What you guys doing?" He says, "I'm helping you. We don't want you to get blind." I say, "Hey, I tried to defend myself against you and I'm a veteran man. What you doing?" He kicked my head. He says to me, "Motherfucker, psycho, Rambo." I never forget that word. And even though they shot me, pepper sprayed me, I was handcuffed, they shot me again. And I'm looking justice and I'm asking this honorable City of Council, City of Attorney.
Thank you, that's your time. Next speaker.
I'm here, I'm sorry, I take your time. This is too much, but I can't handle it.
Thank you for being here, sir. You may give that to the clerk and she'll distribute it to the council and then as we discussed earlier, I will try to help you get in touch again with the IPA and we'll see what resources may be available. We, we, I'm afraid we have to move to our next public speaker. I'm sorry. We give everyone two minutes, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
My name is Azazel Homquist. I'm a resident of downtown San Jose. You know, I'm at a loss for words. I'm sad and I'm disheartened. Public safety, right, is for everybody and they're sweeping Columbus Park and it's not safe for them. Resources aren't given, things aren't in place. There's horrendous issues happening and I think this needs to be addressed and take a little more consideration. Like that man mentioned, PTSD changes us. I think a lot of us have undiagnosed trauma and there's a lot of issues and I hope that we can convene in another time to discuss this further.
Hi, I just recently found out about the sweeps of Columbus Park and I've been down there every day for the past three days trying to help people and be there for them through what they're experiencing. And I just want to say that I've spoke to the representatives of the city directly yesterday and they said that they believe that all of these people have been offered housing and have been given options and that they believe that all of these people have been given a compassionate approach. And I can tell you that that is not what's happening. That's not what's happening there at all. You have over a dozen of your people down there every day from 6:00 AM protecting these vulnerable Americans from you. This is not police work and this is not something police should be doing. If you don't intend to treat these people with violence, do not send the city officials who are trained specifically in violence. This is not police work, it is social work and there needs to be social workers who care about these people, who are representatives of the city, to help them transition. If you're saying the sweeps have to happen and there's no way we can stop them, we have to have them for public health, then those sweeps need to be done in a compassionate way to the people who are down there. Okay? All of our rights are in danger when any of our rights are in danger and I have been down there and those people are not being treated like people. And that's not because the police officers are bad, it's because they're the wrong people for this task. Those people are not in immediate danger to themselves or anyone else and there should not be a violent force from the government showing up to treat them this way. You need social workers to help these people transition into the next phase. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Okay, so do you know that there are sweeps happening in Columbus Park right now? Do you know how many police officers there are on the ground in ratio to how many social workers? These are people, they have lives. These are people with RVs. There's already a roof over their head and police officers right now are towing their vehicles. Did you know that a man was getting his RV towed and when he asked for his ID and for his registration, that was literally inside of the RV that they were taking away, that he was denied? Do you know that when he asked for his ID in his registration, they said, "You can maybe get it later" and when he went and to try to figure out where his truck went, or sorry, where his RV went, it went to a junkyard. It did not even go to a towing yard where he could potentially buy it back. Did you know that Home First created deadlines and said that everybody had to be registered before a deadline, but we, the people who are on the ground as volunteers every single day, did not know about this deadline until one business day beforehand? We had eight working hours to try to get everybody on this deadline. Did you know that this deadline was well before sweeps even began? It was some point in July and we just did not know and it was not communicated to residents. Did you know that all of these people have been trying to get housing for years? I kid you not, years. You ask these people, they've been on the list for two to three years. And when you talk to them about housing being offered, nothing. There is, they were never communicated that information. And suddenly, we try to get 400 people into housing at the same time and you're wondering why there's so many people falling through the cracks. It's because you're trying to do 400 at the same time.
Thank you, that's your time. Back to council. That's your time. That was our last speaker.
Okay, thank you. Tony, thank you to everyone who spoke today. That concludes our council meeting. We will adjourn and then we do have a special meeting with Valley Water beginning at 3:00 PM. Thank you all.